It was on, so you know.
Hey Kristi, do they have a quorum today for solid waste?
It's canceled.
Oh, it is canceled? Did they reschedule a date again? Nothing? Oh, wow. So no Christmas party?
Is there usually a Christmas party for the solid waste?
We use, we, yeah, we used to have a huge Christmas party.
I thought you were joking. Are you serious?
Oh, yeah.
You bring in your favorite recyclable?
Wells fields.
Huh. I, I was just excited it was canceled, so.
Well, I think that kind of said Jen's mind at ease too because of what was going on.
Yeah. Hey, does that forfeit them to have to, we have to drive there and then you have to drive here for the next one?
I doubt it.
No, I think we set that at the last meeting.
Yeah, I have the list hanging on my wall. I think it's like February 24th or something.
I feel like this is a fire hazard.
Getting there.
What do you think, Kristi? What's your professional experience?
Well, there's tiers up here by shame, so there's.
Yeah, I feel like those are safer.
There's six tiers.
The Joneses aren't here again.
I know.
When we had the dog warden issue, we were actually over at the top of the other conference room. And this is a drop in a bucket compared to how many people were there holding macros. Yeah.
There are overflow rooms too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good morning.
Take the front seat to the roller coaster.
If you get here late, you gotta sit up front.
I have 9:30 on the dot.
Good morning, everyone. We're gonna start the meeting a little different today. Max, would you like to come up?
Commissioners, Maxios from the Commissioners' Office. So as an intern with the Commissioners' Office, one thing that I wanted to do was try to connect high school students, high school leaders with the Jogga County Commissioners. So today we have the Berkshire High School class officers. We have Ben Jolz, Danielle Lane, Campbell Horr, and Leila Spangenberg, joined with their senior class advisor, Amy Green. So they're gonna lead the pledge. They're gonna come up afterward, introduce themselves at the microphone, and just talk a little bit about what they're doing as class officers, their interest in public service if they have any, and their post-high school plans. I've reached out to the other high schools in the county, still working with them. I have two weeks left in my internship, so hopefully we can get some more students here in that time, but thank you.
All the way in the front.
Yeah, come on up front and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Max, did you wanna have him take the microphone then?
Yep.
Go ahead. Start off.
My name is Ben Jolz. As you can see, I'm one of the senior officers. I would say I'm very involved in community service projects through 4H. I've been doing it for 11 years. After high school, I plan on going to college and majoring in aerospace engineering.
And you were the fair king, right, Ben?
I was.
All right.
I'm Danielle Lane. I have, I'm a senior class officer. I'm 18 years old. I am very involved in community service through 4H, through Girl Scouts. I've been doing both of those since I'm like, they're like, you can do this at this age, and I start immediately. But yeah, I quite enjoy community service, and I plan on doing it a lot more in my future.
Hi, my name is Campbell Horr. I'm a senior class officer. Part of our duties as class officers is managing graduations such as finding our class motto and our class song. I'm also very involved in 4H and Junior Fair and Fashion Board. When I go to college, I plan on studying political science, and I would eventually like to work in the Department of Agriculture.
So what's the class motto and the class song?
We have not yet decided. It's in the works.
Hi, I'm Leila Spangenberg. I'm obviously a senior class officer as well. I'm very involved in my school. I've been a cheerleader for the past four years, and I've been cheer captain for the past three seasons. I'm very involved in my community when I go out and community service, and I'm very involved in the school, obviously. Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Max, I think this is a great program. We could, you know, continually reach out to the high schools, but it's, it's always nice to see some of the best and brightest from Berkshire. So let's give them a round of applause. Okay, the prayer today is in honor of our veterans. Every waving flag, hand-covered heart, and deeply felt prayer asking God to bless America is a declaration of thanks to all those who have served. You've shown by example what it is truly mean, what it truly means to belong to the land of the free and home of the brave. Every time I think of you, I think of God. Amen. Public comment. Anybody sign in? Three minutes, three minutes.
I was gonna say, if this, if this is regarding the House Bill 96 piggyback, we will have a discussion from Auditor Walder to the end of the agenda and then public comment immediately thereafter. I mean, we can certainly take it now, but just, just to let you know.
Yeah, cuz it's the piggyback provision. Well, let's, let's start. Heather Copper? Come up to the microphone. Set, set the timer.
This one?
Yes.
Yes. My name's Heather Copper, and I'm in, from Hyrum, Ohio. And I, I might have misread something on the agenda, but I've been helping, volunteering for seniors, and I'm looking at the help that the Jogga Transit can do. And I'm trying to coordinate with some of the housing authority in Jogga County so we can set up some type of service for them so that they could have maybe a regular shopping day during the week cuz I'm driving all over the county helping people that don't wanna wait three hours to, for Jogga Transit to show up. It was my understanding that this is now in the hands of Lake Tran, so I just wanna know who's the best person to try to coordinate this with.
Well, Joanne, Joanne is our Director of Jogga Transit, and we have a partnership with Lake Tran to go in and grant together. The financial part of it is totally separate. It always will be. So I would, if you, my suggestion is contact Joanne and sit down with her and hash this out. And if you have any other problems, give me a call.
Okay.
Dr. Michael Hanlon?
Thank you, Commissioner. At the discretion of the Commissioners, I would suggest that our comment from the school districts in Jogga County go along with Mr. Walder. I think that would be the appropriate timing.
Well, that's fine. I think everybody else is piggyback as well, so let's pause that until after the auditor speaks.
And I mean, unless anyone needs to go and, and needs to speak now, but I think otherwise that, that makes sense. Okay, Mr. Tyber, did you wanna talk now?
Is this public comment?
Yes.
I just got here, I'm sorry. May I make a public comment?
Come up to the microphone.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Commissioner, for this opportunity.
I'm Jonathan Tyber. I'm the President of Jogga County Township Association and a Clarton Township trustee. I'm speaking for my trustee hat. We, we wrote, we sent you a letter from, from the Board of Trustees regarding House Bill 96, a provision in House Bill 96. This, this provision, we have concerns with it. This provision authorizes you, the County Commissioners, to implement a 2.5% tax credit, kind of piggybacked on, on the state credits. However, that 2.5% credit, who, who, on whose dime? It's gonna be on the taxing authorities dime, okay? So Clarton Township will have to, will have to pay for that. In Clarton, that represents about $26,000 a year, okay? That's more than half of one of our full-time workers' salary. Now, in Clarton, we, we collect, as a bu, as the County Budget Commission knows, we, Clarton collects far, we collect less than anybody else in operational taxes, and that's fine. We don't have a poor man's mentality. We just get it done. But to, to reduce the revenue is kind of daunting. There's no, the thing is, there's no fat to, to trim in Clarton. There just isn't. And we're okay with that. We, we should, we should spend as little as possible, but without compromising the quality of our services. I'm afraid that this may just do that, just compromise, you know? Now, here's the other thing. As you know, property tax reform, that's coming. This is a part of it. This is a way for legislators to, to say, hey, look, we're trying. Well, not on their dime, okay? It's on our dime. And so it's going to be, there's a grassroots campaign that, that, it may be a ballot issue to do away with all property tax. So what I'm saying is for you Commissioners to implement this, it may be a good idea a year from now in Jogga County or three years from now, but it's not a good idea today. All right? You're, you don't sunset on your authority. You might have to reapply for that authority each year, but it doesn't sunset, okay? So I just wanna caution, please, we wanna plead with you to just not, to just hold off from implementing anything like that. Maybe not at all, ever, but, but maybe just not today. Makes sense? Is that clear enough?
Yep, thanks, John.
Thank you for your.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three.
Morning Commissioners. On November 17th, I approved the hiring for the Emergency Management Agency of Blake Rogers to the position of Planner-Trainer Number 1712 to be effective November 24th, 2025, at the rate of $29.75 per hour, Grade 13E, Step 3, with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Also, on November 17th, I approved the hiring for Maintenance of Aaron Bolt to the position of Maintenance Worker Number 1904 to be effective November 24th, 2025, at the rate of $20.99 per hour, Grade 6, Step 7, with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Also, on November 17th, I approved and executed for the Department of Water Resources the Service Contract Agreement with Hydraulic Lifts LLC to perform vehicle lift service and maintenance as needed at various locations within the department for a period of one year effective November 17th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $1,500. Also, on November 17th, I concurred with a liquor license with the Bainbridge Township Trustees in not requesting a hearing on the liquor license being requested by Van, Han Ventures LLC located at 7175 Aurora Road, Aurora, Ohio, October 0 new 03560177-2, and that's all.
Thank you. Now, four, five, and six are minutes of September 4th, September 9th, and September 16th.
I move to approve items number four through six.
Second. Any more discussion? Call for vote.
Hey.
Aye.
Yes.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning Adrian.
Adrian Gordon with the Commissioners' Office, covering today's financials, which include, among other things, appropriations transfer from the Sheriff's Office, moving payroll funds into their vehicle expense account for the purchase, and upfitting of four new patrol vehicles, a cash transfer from the Commissioners' Office to Water Resources for permit and construction costs for the new youth center project sewer line. There's travel encumbrances from the Dog Warden to attend the 2025 Ohio County Dog Warden Association Winter Conference in Columbus, Ohio. Among the vouchers is $8,276 from ADP to Zoho Corporation for Endpoint Central Management and Security Annual Renewal, and also $4,000 from, for Squire Patton Boggs for services rendered in regards to the county's annual information filing with the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board in connection with the general obligation and revenue bonds that were used to build the Jogga County Office Building.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler?
Hey.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBor?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Shane Hajar with the County Engineers' Office, here to present items eight and nine. County Engineers' Office requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one and final, decreasing the contract with Oglesby Construction Incorporated with, for the application of payment markings of various roads in the amount of $6,270.10.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And item number nine, the County Engineers' Office requesting the Board approve and execute change order number two and final, decreasing the contract with Miller Builders LLC for the construction of the salt storage building in the amount of $2,339.59.
Two decreases in a row, huh? You're just bragging now, right? I move to approve item number nine.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler?
Hey.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBor?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning Sheriff.
Scott Hildebrand, Sheriff, very involved in the community.
Were you a 4H member in your younger days?
Yeah.
Yep, you were.
Were you really? What'd you do in 4H, Sheriff?
I had sheep and then horses.
What did a sheep go for when you did 4H?
Probably 10 cents a pound, I don't know. I'm here for the Victims of Crime Act Grant. As you know, we've had the Victims of Crime Advocate for many years, and this is the renewal of that. Grant for the next grant cycle.
Sheriff, could you just briefly discuss the grant and how the funds will be used?
The what now?
How the funds will be used. Just discuss what, what the grant is.
This is primarily the salary for the employee. This is an employee that can, can deal with victims of crime. That, she gets, she's dedicated to that when they, when they're involved in that, all the way to going to court, helping people out. That frees up the law enforcement deputies to do the investigation and follow up with that, and that is just another touch of personal appeal to them, to help them out.
I move to approve item number 10.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler?
Hey.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBor?
Yes.
Thanks, Sheriff.
This came from.
Okay, I'll take this one.
Yeah.
The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board waive the 200-hour maximum vacation accrual for Rick Wareham, Acting Maintenance Director for a period of six months effective November 9th, 2025, payroll number 25-24 through May 9th, 2026, payroll number 26-10.
Amy, I, I mean, I can guess why this is needed, but could you give us an explanation?
Sure. Just with the departure of Glenn Vernick, the previous Maintenance Director, there is decreased manpower and really an inability for Rick to take and use his vacation time, so we'd like to extend the period for him to utilize that.
I move to approve item number 11.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler?
Hey.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBor?
Yes.
Good morning.
Morning Commissioners. Nick Goris, Water Resources, requesting the Board approve the submission of the 2025 Certification List of Delinquent User Fees and Subsequent Certification to the Jogga County Auditor in accordance with ORC 6117.02 and the Jogga County Department of Water Resources Rules and Regulations, Section F.501, in a total amount of $467,375.04. Basically breaks down to $438,172.24 of non-paid user fees with a penalty of $29,202.80. And this was current as of 9:30 yesterday, 9:30 AM yesterday morning. A few people have already paid some of these fees, but it's, it's a living document, so.
So when I'm looking at the spreadsheet, what are the yellow highlights and the blue highlights?
So in that spreadsheet, that's our tracking of who's paid, who hasn't. The yellow highlights were in there, those people who had certification on their taxes that haven't paid it yet. So they're still waiting for, some people just don't even pay their taxes. So we had a deduct current rate versus what was certified to actually get the actual amount.
And then what's the blue highlight?
The blue highlights are people that are on our water accounts, of which we have instantly started with the shut-off notices, so that we don't need to certify those cuz they're not gonna be paying their bills if they don't have water.
So how, how late are these folks on their bill payments?
And this happens every year. People just don't pay their bills.
Like all year they don't pay?
All year. They don't, they don't pay the, traditionally, they were putting it onto their taxes. At one point in time, it's something that the department is looking at developing right now with some kind of education document explaining, you know, people would write these off on the taxes whether they had a home business or something of that nature. Some people, with the water shut-offs, we had people come in and said, well, it went in with my property, with my mortgage payment. So we've been explaining to them that our base sewer and water user, if they don't pay their bills for a year, there's a minimum of $300 in late fees that they're paying on top of, you know, just not paying their bills. So it's an education piece, and that's where we're, when you look at the numbers, you know, half a million dollars, you know, it's 400 and some account, 460 accounts that aren't paying, 7% of our accounts that don't pay a bill. And once we've been educated even on the waterside, they're happy to know that they're actually, we're actually trying to save them some money by getting them to actually pay their bill.
But I mean, these, these aren't people that just missed a month. These are people that habitually are not paying their bills.
Not necessarily. The minimum on, that we're certifying on here is $56. So unfortunately, we have that deadline in our rules and regs that say October. So there's some people that are paying, but for the most part, the average of these 460 accounts is over $1,000, so.
And then you do have some customers that are on some kind of payment plan?
We do on the waterside right now. So when we did, when we sent out the shut-off notices, some people called and said, you know, we can't make this. Can you do a payment plan? And we do offer a payment plan. So right now, I think we have about 30 customers on a payment plan. Pretty much, with the water shut-offs, the last notice we sent out, I think I told you, we had 60 accounts that we sent letters to. We're down to 12 of them. They have till the end of this month. They get paid up, but we're down to 12 of them, of which we will post a notice on their door that says, you know, next week, we're gonna shut your water off, and usually all of them pay, so.
So I'll move to approve item number 12.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Commissioner Spudler?
Hey.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13, Destination Jogga will provide a presentation on the events at Destination Jogga and discuss possible changes to bed tax collection.
Morning Kathy.
Morning.
Kristi. How are we all today? So, I'm Kathy from Destination Jogga. You all know me. And I wanted to go over a few things from, that we did in 2025 so that you know we're doing something with the Commissioners' money for the bed tax. And we did get our new website. The numbers and the growth of it are like amazing, what's happening with our new website. And I did send you, I don't know if you got these, okay. Where it stands at this point, we are getting a lot of activity on the website, which is what we had hoped with getting the new one. Facebook and Instagram, our numbers are growing. It's, right now, we're sitting, well, when this was printed last week, it was 4,305 people had gone to our Facebook and looking at it and liking it and asking questions and whatever. And the interesting part on here is the age brackets of the people. We've kind of moved down from the baby boomers, me, and we're, there's still a high percentage there, but now we're getting more of the 45 to 55, 54, and the 35 to 44. So that's, that's a market that we've gotta go after because the baby boomers are gonna, at some point, be not around anymore. So I've, I've learned a lot. I've been playing a lot with AI and ChatGPT. It's been pretty.
Yeah, I know Kathy. This was written by AI. I can tell.
It's been pretty fun to, I tell it what I wanted, and it will lie. It does. It's incredible, but. So we've been getting a lot of activity on the Facebook pages. We have a woman, Kim Brayley from Middlefield, that has been doing our Facebook and Instagram. We have her, we've hired her for one post a week, which isn't a lot. I have 420 members, so it's gonna take her a good four years to get through those, and hopefully there'll be new ones coming on, but she's doing a great job, and our numbers are just growing by leaps and bounds. And I'm pretty impressed with how she's been doing it. She, she will get to all of our members and do, and make an, she makes an appointment with everybody, so it's, it's been very successful, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on it. Members are going, when's it my turn, Kathy? When's it my turn? But it, we'll get there. We'll get there. We've hired, we got some, we didn't hire them. We got some new board members in 2025. So we got four new ones and another one this year, five, well, we got five. So we got four new ones and another one this year, five, well, we got five last year. But our maximum on our board is 13, so we're up to 11. So we are making some progress there. Sometimes it's a little difficult with 13 or 12 or 11 board members. It was just as difficult when we only had three. We are, we're getting everybody into like what, what tourism is all about and what we, what we need to really be doing. We're going to be planning a strategic planning meeting and a board retreat, which we haven't had either of those in about three years, so it's past time. We're working on redoing the bylaws. We've got our annual dinner set for January 15th at the Amish Country Kitchen. And Jim, if you would please mark that down on your calendar and come and give us the blessing for that night, and hopefully, you can all come. We just finished, we changed from a brochure to a magazine. And the magazine is more, it's like three columns. But it was a lot of work switching to a magazine from our brochure. I didn't realize how much that was going to be, but we finally got it off to the printer. I had hoped that they would be in today, but they, they didn't, it didn't make it. So once I get them, I will bring some up for you all and leave some here with Gina and some in Kristi's department, but, and some, of course, downstairs. We did a few policies and procedures that we had not had anymore. We did a new social media, and we did a new, new board member application. We have to stay with our focus also on the whole county. But we have the large, the fourth largest Amish community is Middlefield. And we need to identify better the people that are actually coming to Middlefield because it's changed, that, that target market has changed. That's about it. Do you have any questions on what we've accomplished for the past year?
So when you say target market has changed, what do you mean?
I'm sorry?
When you say the target market has changed there for Middlefield, what do you mean?
The, the market used to be seniors. That was the people that we had on Facebook, and now we're looking into the Gen X, the Gen Ys, and the Millennials. And they all are different on how you have to approach them.
I see, yeah.
And what they want. I'm not an outdoorsy person, but, you know, to tell me that I needed to go take a hike, I would tell you to go take a hike. I'm not, I'm petrified. I would tell him nicely. Very nicely. I, I'm, I'm not, I don't like snakes, so I'm not an outdoorsy person. I'm not really a winter person because I don't like to be cold. And I'm not sure where my actual market is that I should be living, but I'm thinking it's not northeast. Whatever. I'm here for a long time. I'll never get my husband to move, but.
You want to talk about the bed tax?
Yes, we're going to get to the bed tax right now.
That's what I want to talk about.
Good, me too. Gina's department printed this off and had, and did a lot of research for, for us on, on the bed tax issue. Gina's area came up with like 32 really good names. When I went on AI, I could not believe the number of, of what's there. And it gave me like where they had pulled it from. It's quite, quite clever, that AI thing. It's a little scary, but knowledge is, whatever. I'm doing okay with it. But there were anywhere from 140 to 180 of just Airbnbs. And on the VRBOs, it was over 300. And I'm, this, it included like residential houses that you live in, that you would rent out for a short-term rental. It, it was, it was fascinating. It really was fascinating, at least to me. But, so I know that there, with just the 32 that we've got. And we get bed tax money from, the, the primary driver on the bed tax is Punderson. The next one would be the Lodge at Gas Lake. The next one is the KOA Campground in Thompson. And then Pine Lakes Truck Club, and then the Hillbrook Club also contribute currently, those five, to our current bed tax. So if they're sitting here, if we're sitting here in the county with, with just the 32, or if we get 90 or 20, 50, whatever number, if, if we could get our fingers on a little bit of that money, it would help us. It would, it would help get Kim maybe to work more than one, do one post a week. It would help on, on our marketing efforts. We have a marketing committee now that we hadn't had in a long time. And, and they're, they're really, we're, we're working hard. We're making a lot of good changes for the plus. But we're an active, we're active with the America 250. We're going to be showcasing Joga County's heritage and the attractions for 2026. We've, I've got a great relationship currently with all the chambers and with Joga Girls Partnership. So I'm going to continue to, to, to work on those and keep that. There are so many things in Joga County that people are not aware of, and I need the tourists to come to Joga County. And it was shown that Melinda Huntley came and talked to an America 250 meeting in October. And for every tourist that spends one night in Joga County, they spend three times the amount of money that somebody would to just come for the day. It's, it's, it's pretty interesting. We need the tourism. And if we can do something to get more bed tax, anything would be beneficial. For five and a half years, I've been doing this job, and, and I've never been to ask you for money, so.
Another thing I know, when she came up from the Ohio Tourism, one quote that she had was just amazing, that Ohio is number three for tourism, just underneath California and New York. So we're in a perfect spot, so.
We're in a perfect spot, absolutely. In the past, we had a few years where, after COVID, we, we couldn't really afford, but we're now getting back into being part of Ohio Tourism. Melinda, we're getting to be with the right people, too. We had, with Ohio Tourism, they have certain times of the year where they do different fun things. And that was the Ice Cream Trail. And I recommended Cowboy Creamery be put on the Ice Cream Trail, and they were. And then for fall, they did one where it was corn mase. And I checked to make sure that I had only Patisseries because I didn't want to hurt anybody else's feelings. But Patterson's is the only one that did a corn mase. So they got on that trail, and they were, they were quite happy with that advertising that they got. So I am working.
And, and one thing about bed tax for Airbnbs is that we're not taxing Joga County people. We're taxing visitors.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, and it's just kind of leveling the playing fields because you're already taxing the resident, or the visitors that are coming to the, the larger hotels. So you're just kind of leveling the playing field with the hotels and the Airbnbs. And my understanding is, so House Bill 94 would authorize the county to amend our definition of a hotel to include establishments with fewer than five rooms. So that's something within the Commissioners' power to capitalize on that. So what's the next step as far as the Airbnbs and possibly collecting bed tax?
If we need more, if you need us to gather more information, I can do that. I, I know that there are some townships in Joga County that are not interested in having Airbnbs at all. They don't want them, and.
That they know of.
Yeah, right. That's the thing, right?
Yes, yeah. And it's kind of funny because one, one of them that was an Airbnb, and I won't mention which township, but they had learned that if they went to agritourism, they can't do anything to them to stop them. So they, they've got two rabbits in a rabbit hutch and some bees, and they fall under agritourism. And those are the ones that are hard to find. They're the, the ones that, that kind of went into the black hole. But I will find them.
Yeah, so.
Not only being the, you know, the, the person with the hammer with the taxation, but once they get in line and with the word, the money that you're going to get, it's going to help promote their Airbnb, Airbnb.
Absolutely.
You know, it's going to benefit their, their business.
Absolutely. It's a win-win.
Yeah, so I mean, if there's 140, I think you said Airbnb is 300, Verbros, and we just got a list of 32 right now. So I think.
And, and this list is very accurate. It, it's totally there. But there, and I don't, I'm, I'm, I know that, that AI, who gave me this information, I went to three different AIs to figure out, and they were all in the same ballgame. I didn't believe the one, and I'm like, there can't be that many.
I know, they lie to you sometimes. You got to watch out.
Exactly, exactly. But it was interesting to find out where they got their information from, but.
So Kathy, let me ask you, how, how much, how much do you feel that each Airbnb would bring in on a, on a, on taxes? What do you think that they would pay a year?
If they can pay even what Hillbrook pays, and that's not a whole lot of money, or Pine Lakes, it's, it's something additional. If it's $500, it's $500. I think it's going to be more.
So, you know, and I just, you know, and I might be the minority on the board with this, is I, I, I really don't want more taxes, you know? I would say, you know, to have some type of a, you know, like a, like, that they could register with a certain, certain fee. Because, you know, anytime you say taxes, I think that there's going to be a whole lot of other accountability and other checks and balances of all this stuff that just creates another big, you know, mess of, of bureaucracy that, you know, what would be the poss, you know, possibility that we have like a registry? And then out of that registry, they pay X number of dollars for, you know, for that, for that membership.
So just to clarify, the they is not the Airbnb. It's, it's the person coming to the Airbnb is the one that's paying.
Right, but they're paying it to the Airbnb.
Right, but, but then I think with the way it would work is Airbnb would pay directly to the county, is my understanding.
I think that's how it works, yeah.
So, so it's not, it's not as, I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal for the owner.
Right, but I think that there's also, you know, I come from the law enforcement world. So when, when, there's always going to be that risk that they're going to not pay the county, but they're going to collect it, right? So it's like you, you, you open up a whole lot of these other Pandora's boxes when, with, with taxes. And I think that, you know, it, it's, I think that there's a, there's going to be a big process to try to maintain and, and police this, that if we had the ability of, you know, saying that, you know, for, you know, the, on the operational purchase, you know, purpose, you, you register your business and you, and here's what it costs, and, and part of that membership, your business is listed in this, in this, you know, registry that you, you are, you're able to do this. And I, I just think that that would, you know, it's, I, I just think that it's a, it's a big ask when we're looking at trying to police 320 additional places to make sure that they're paying their taxes. I, I just, I don't know, I struggle with it because I think that there's, there's, there's the chance that, you know, there are people are going to be spent, whether they're out of, whether they're out of town or whether they're in town. I, you know, here's a situation. When our Joga residents go out of town, you want them to be treated just as fairly as when somebody's coming into your town, right? So, you know, I just think that it's, I think that there's, there's ways that we could get around this to avoid a whole lot of, there's got to be a better way than, 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 when you say tax, I just struggle with it.
I mean, I think it's still an infancy stage, though, and we need to know some more information. But will you come back to us with an, an update of?
Sure.
Okay, I think that's.
Absolutely. I think at least we, if we can do this, we start with the 32 that we know are definitely, and then, you know, see where it goes, but.
You know, and I know that you, and, and I, and listen, Kathy, we've known each other for a long, long time. And, and I know that we, you never ask us for money. But it, it, you know, at the end of the day, we should be investing in our county, in our county tourism. We've got a great, we, we've got a great county with a lot of, you know, positive things that, you know, if we need to look at a plan of doing something, I think that that only makes sense to, to strengthen, you know, the area that you work in, to, to only, you know, give us more of that front stage. And, you know, so don't feel like that's not a possibility.
Okay.
I just personally would rather, I mean, because what, what you're suggesting is that local taxpayers should pay for Destination Joga. My opinion would be the people coming to Joga should pay for Destination Joga. So I mean, I just think we need some more information, and then we can go from there.
Kathy, is it basically 3%?
It's three, yeah. And then there's a percentage that takes, is taken out of that for an admin. And I, I don't know the exact amount of the percentage, but let's just say 3%. Right.
One night stay at a Airbnb, $100. Come visit Joga County for $3 tax. Not a bad deal.
Not a bad deal.
As long as you get it, as long as it's collected.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as it goes through the Airbnb porthole or the Verbro porthole, it, it would automatically. I mean, you, you can have people that are paying under the table, just like now you pay your cleaning lady under the table, and then they don't pay taxes. I mean, that kind of thing happens. But, but anyone that would sign up through, through these websites would automatically pay.
And hopefully.
It seems easy to me.
There could be an app for that, Ralph.
Yeah, there already are.
The current, the current resolution that has been placed by the Commissioners is set at five rooms and 3%. So that would be a process that you would have to consider as to updating that resolution to adjust that, that percentage, that, that the number of rooms, and to include, you know, the language on the Verbros and the Airbnbs and that stuff. Debbie is the person that handles the bed tax currently for our office, and she is here if you do have any additional questions on the process.
I, I think we should move on. Everyone's here for something else, so.
Thank you all. Have a great Thanksgiving.
You too, Kathy.
We'll keep in touch.
Thanks, Kathy.
I will definitely, you know, we do.
Yes, I do.
These are resolutions for our three New Leaf program graduates that will be graduating on the 20th. So one is for Jesse Yandy, Nazario Mendez, and Kendra Renko.
I'll move to approve item numbers 14, 15, and 16.
Second. Any discussion? Just want to explain, the New Leaf program was started about six years ago. And Judge Carolyn Paskey requested it, the Commissioners. We had a chance to, our share was up 25% of a $200,000 grant, so we put up $50,000. And she just, she received a couple of years ago a national award, and they've only given out to 10 people from Code of Code on drug courts, and her success rate is about 85%. So this is a great program, and call for a vote.
Commissioners.
Aye.
Commissioner Brekey.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
I didn't see you back there, Chuck. I was like, where is he?
I was hiding behind the door. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Chuck Walter, Joga County Auditor's Office. I want to thank you for the opportunity of talking about House Bill 96. Before we get into the details, however, I want to address something that came to light last week in session. I think it was in the public comment section. And there was a, a comment made in some, some conversation back and forth about a signature line on a letter that Commissioner Brekey and I jointly sent out to parties that would be affected by House Bill 96's implementation of both the owner occupied and homestead credit piggybacks. And for the record, I want to be clear that the, the S left after the word Commissioners is entirely my fault. Commissioner Brekey had, the day before we sent the letter out, she had emailed me and said, I do not want this to be plural. I want this to be singular. She didn't want to misrepresent that the board was taking an action as a body, but she rather was seeking information as an individual. And I just failed to implement that change. And in doing so, the letter went out. There was no malice intent. You'll notice at the top of the letter where the Commissioners' name is, there is no S. I edited it there. I was interrupted, thought I finished it, didn't, and then sent the letter out. So I own that mistake. I hope that that doesn't become the primary focus of attention on House Bill 96 because I think there's some very important issues with it that need to be considered by the Commissioners. And I know politically, oftentimes, somebody's mistake becomes the topic of the conversation rather than the actual. rather than the actual subject matter which has relevance. So, moving on, I'd like to give you a little history about why that letter went out. In late September of this year, Commissioner Brackey reached out to me and asked me for some information in regard to what the ramifications would be, should Geogga consider at any time implementing the piggyback provision in House Bill 96. At that time, there was a lot of activity in the press with certain counties implementing it. Most were implementing it what I would call blindly. They were simply just invoking it. And I, um, provided Commissioner Brackey with some information primarily factual based as to by entity what the costs would be should the commissioners choose to invoke that. And we had numerous conversations back and forth. I viewed Commissioner Brackey's request of me was simply data gathering, doing her due diligence, which anyone who knows Commissioner Brackey knows that that is not something you would not expect to happen on something as important as House Bill 96 and this provision. So I didn't think much more of it. Um, I was happy to help her. Uh, we had a number of spirited conversations about it. And then, lo and behold, the Geogga County Township Association, on October 8th, invited Commissioner Brackey and myself to give a presentation to townships. As you know, Geogga has 16 townships. They would all be equally affected by an implementation of House Bill 96's provision. And, um, we put together a rather short but very fact-based presentation of if this were invoked, this would be the ramifications to your particular, um, entity. That information was received, I think, quite well. I had many people come up to me and thank me and thanked, I heard them thanking Commissioner Brackey for providing the data, for allowing a feedback to be presented. And so based on that, we generated this joint letter, because there were parties that would be affected that were not at the township association meeting, quite frankly. Uh, the townships, although there are 16 of them, it's far less than even half of the entities who would be affected if this were taken advantage of by the commissioners. It's interesting, though, because even subsequent to our coming to the table here today, Commissioner DeVore also reached out to me and said, hey, give, tell me more about this provision that we're allowed to do. He, I think, um, the context was he had heard Lake County had implemented it, and his concern was, what does this mean to our stakeholders? The people who are collecting this money, expecting this revenue to perform certain functions? And then, um, unilaterally, the authority's been given to the commissioners to basically remove that revenue and provide it to another segment of the populace. Um, I provided Commissioner DeVore similarly to Commissioner Brackey with data verbally. And again, I looked at his request as nothing more than doing his homework, doing his due diligence, which I, I applaud, I applaud people for doing that. So then subsequently on December, on October 16th, Commissioner Brackey and I jointly prepared the letter, assembled the financial data, and sent it out to the entities. And since that time, we have gotten, I think, well over a third of the people who received it have, in some way, shape, or form, have voiced of their position as stakeholders or people that would be affected directly by the loss of that revenue. And I believe many of them are here today to probably attest to what they, what they said. So again, um, I, I think, I, I want to then dive into a little bit about House Bill 96 and what does it mean? And, and I know, uh, you don't know, I, I was very actively involved in some of the details that went into House Bill 96, being that I testified on three separate occasions, um, down in Columbus on certain aspects. Unfortunately, um, some of those were vetoed by the governor. So I, I am, uh, I'm here to tell you that the House Bill 96 document is 4,000 pages long. It, it is our state's budget. So, and I know there was some characterization that, um, it was a, um, a monstrosity, and no doubt it is a large, a large bill. There's no question about that. But it was also dubbed to be an embarrassment to Ohio, and I, I don't look at it that way. I don't look at it that way for a number of reasons. Had Ohio followed our federal government and not approved a state budget, I, I think that would have been the embarrassment. Now, there are always things in a budget which we like and things we don't like, and House Bill 96 is no exception. However, I, I think we have to be careful sitting on the sidelines and judging the thousands of hours that went into testimony, debate, a lot of argument, to come to the fruition of House Bill 96. And House Bill 96's provision, this piggyback component, which sits on top of owner occupied credit and homestead credit, is not a rollback. A rollback, as it was referred to last week, as we currently know it, is a reimbursement of the state providing us credits. So we discount the recipient, the taxpayer, and then the state reimburses the taxing authority, and they receive 100% of their money. So to associate the two together implies that somehow there's no loss to the local entity who's taxing. That's not true with this. This is truly a piggyback, and it is on the backs of the taxing authorities. So, I, and I guess I want to be clear that we don't misconstrue the benefit of a rollback versus the negative connotation that could be construed with a piggyback. So, and I guess to be clear, I, I'm not here to vilify House Bill 96 or to preach for it. I am simply here to be able to provide you clean data that's fact-based, so that when you make your decision, you're making it on data. You're not making it on emotion. You're not making it on something you heard from somebody else, which could be true or could not be true. And so in that regard, I, I am an advocate of the taxpayers, and I believe our seniors are absolutely deserving of tax relief. I don't think anyone here is questioning that our disabled veterans should have immediate tax relief. And likewise, I think everyone in Geogga who lives in their home as a principal resident, they deserve tax relief. But the devil is in the details, and if we're trying to provide them tax relief, which could ultimately cause more tax, we're, we're working in a circular mentality. We're, we're not, we're not fixing the problem that's before us. And in fact, there are some aspects of House Bill's 96 piggyback which could result in exactly new taxes being added because revenue was lost, or a renewal of a levy earlier than what was anticipated, resulting in more tax. Those are the fears that I have, looking at the data and the facts, and those are the things that this letter intended to inform the affected parties, so that they could weigh in on what would or wouldn't cause them consternation, should this be considered by the commissioners. So, I, again, I have no vote in this. My job is to provide data, and that was the spirit in which I did it. I'm not apologizing for the data. I'm apologizing for the dangling S at the end of commissioner, and, and, and I, I will again apologize for doing that. I hope it didn't cause anybody too much grief. But I would hope that based on the information that we sent jointly out, if you read the letter, I believe you can conclude from the letter, there are ramifications that were not considered when Columbus decided this was a great idea. That's not to say tax reform isn't necessary. I absolutely believe it is. But the solution is not necessarily to just reduce people's revenue arbitrarily. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, I extend my apologies for the mistake.
Thanks for coming in, Chuck. I mean, I think, you know, as soon as I read the legislation, my gut reaction was, this is not right for Geogga County. In, in part because of our budget commission, which love you guys or hate you, right? I mean, you do make sure that those cash carryovers are not excessive. So we are, we are a different county than Lake is, where they have much larger cash carryovers in their budget. So, I mean, so my, my sort of initial gut reaction was like, no, we don't want to do this, but like, I don't, that's not how I make decisions, based on my gut. I make it based on facts and figures. So that's why I asked, um, the information from the auditor, and also why I solicited feedback from the townships and the other town, taxing entities, because, I mean, if you read the letters, they were pretty clear that, you know, many of them will have to put additional levies on the ballot, will need those quicker, they'll have to make, um, cuts, they'll have to pave roads later, or whatever. There, there, there will be, um, I think every one but one township was, was not in favor of this. So, um, that's why I solicited, solicited the information, and I'm glad, I'm glad I did.
Well, well, the irony, as you've indicated, is that, um, in order to benefit our seniors, our state legislators came up with this great idea, that they would simply reduce revenue going to some of the very entities that are there to support our seniors. So Department on Aging would, would be significantly affected by this reduction. Yet they're providing our seniors with necessary benefits. So I, I find there's a, there's a natural conundrum here. Is it, how is that supposed to be squared with the public?
Yeah, and I, I personally find something like off-putting about reducing a levy that our voters voted on. And, I mean, and some of these levies had overwhelming support, and then, you know, three people are just like, nah, you don't need all this money, uh, when the taxpayers made a different decision.
Yeah, and I, and again, I'm not here to say that that provision in House Bill 96 is absolutely terrible across all of Ohio.
Right.
I, I think, um, Lake County is very different in their chemical makeup of their budget commission than Geogga is. Geogga is typically considered the pointy end of the spear. When it comes to budget commissions, Lake, um, barely has hearings. And, and because of that, there's less check and balance in Lake. I, I think we rightfully hold our taxing entities accountable in Geogga, on average. That doesn't mean we don't have occasions where we believe there's excess unencumbered cash. But when there is, when, when there are those circumstances, the budget commission has historically taken action. And, and I'm not apologizing for that, but I'm trying to rationalize that just because the budget commission takes those actions doesn't mean that there's tons of meat on the bone. I, I profess, in Geogga, there's less meat on the bone than there is in Lake.
Yeah.
And for that reason alone, I think Lake probably took the decision that would be right for their county.
Right, right. I agree.
So I guess my, my whole thing was, is I think that the, the whole, this whole process goes beyond just an S at the end of commissioners. Because I, I learned from it, from, you know, that this letter was out, from many of the different board members of the school boards across the county that had reached out to me, basically based on the simple fact that their common, common, comment was, is they're constantly disrespected in the budget commission meetings. They're, they're, they're hesitant to try to reach out to somebody. I did not get copies of the letters back till yesterday to be able to look at this. So I think that, you know, to, to hear people tell me, you know, about this letter, and it's, the responses are coming back to the county commissioner's office, and I had no idea of any of these letters, had no idea that the letter was going out. I thought was absolutely uncalled for. But we should have been given, as Jim stated last week, he didn't know about the letter. I didn't know about the letter. But at the same time, to get letters from these townships yesterday, to be, to be given these letters, I, I don't think that that's right.
So the, the letters were addressed to me because I asked for the information.
Understand, but on the letter, it said to the commissioner's office. And it just so happens to be that I'm one of the commissioners, and Jim DeVore is one of the commissioners.
Where, where did it say that?
So I just, at the end of the day, I think that the letter was, 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 we should have had more transparency, because I think that it would have been nice to know that that was something, especially when it comes to the decision that the three of us need to make. It, this, this board is not run by one person. It's not a one-person board. There's three of us.
But I'm the only one that does homework. So this was part of my homework process. I mean, I routinely ask questions of directors before meetings. You're not involved in that. I don't CC you on the email correspondence in part, because it could be a public, um, an open meetings violation. I mean, this is just, that is part of my process and how I make decisions, is I like additional information oftentimes.
Well, I, I think the only thing I could say is, um, you know, it's not about the S, but I think what I'm hearing is it is all about the S, which, which is fine. Um, I, I, I think perhaps then your perspective may be more aligned with how Lake took, took action, which was, um, basically they just shot from the hip and.
No, that's not at all what I'm seeing. I'm just saying transparency would probably be the best policy.
So, so soliciting, um, information about House Bill 96, I did not limit who contacted me to say, what does House Bill 96, how does it affect the taxing entities? I answer every question that I am provided. If somebody, even if a member of the public, which over the weekend, I got numerous emails from school, school folks who asked very pointed questions about House Bill 96. I didn't copy the school or the school board on those responses. When people individually ask me a question, my duty is to answer those questions. If somebody chooses to engage and do homework and deep dive into a subject, I encourage that, but I don't know that I have the ability of saying, well, if you do, then I'm going to force-feed the entire organization. I, I think, you know, there is, was not a discussion in public on House Bill 96, although there was, there were numerous conversations in public about tax reform. And so I, I think therein lies the problem. And Ralph, I'll be clear, I'll be clear with you. I, I would agree with you that your and my communication is less than perfect. But, you know, as we both know, it's a two-way street. I, I've always answered your calls. I've always answered your texts. I've always come whenever you've asked me a question. But I've been an auditor now for almost eight years. You've never come and asked me what my concerns are as auditor in my office, and I would say that's part of communication. So you kind, people kind of reap what they sow, and I'm not saying that that's what happened in this letter. The letter was provided exactly as I've described. Conspiracy theorists will dig into that and figure out some other hidden agenda. There was no hidden agenda. If you read the content of the letter, it speaks for itself. It was asking for feedback for a specific issue, and it was providing factual data. And that's, that's that.
Yeah, and I was sad. I mean, I was receiving letters until yesterday afternoon, so I, I was, they were still coming in. I was waiting to gather those before sending them out.
I've received plenty of phone calls, emails, and text messages, and I've gotten back with people, just a wife of a first responder about the fire department, and just, it's going to affect everybody. I mean, before this job, I had Burton Township trustee, and it's very hard to pass a township levy from time to time. Chardon Township took 22 years to pass a road levy.
Commissioner DeVore, can I ask, how, um, what prompted you to reach out to me to ask me about this a couple of weeks ago?
Well, I'm in full communication with the county commissioners that's touched Geogga County. What are you guys doing? What do you think about this? What do you think about that? And then when Lake County did this, I, I really started reading and concentrating on House Bill 96. And again, you know, my history as a township trustee for 11 years, uh, I was in the trenches with, with that. It's just, uh, it's very hurtful for everybody. It's like, so you don't fix a road for five or six years until the people beg and plead and, and this and that? It's hard enough to pass a levy now, and I think this would really be detrimental to all the, all the entities. Thanks for this fact-finding mission.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Do you want to open up the public comment about House Number 96 now, or just finish the other board discussion items, and then move on to public comment?
Well, let's, let's stay on House Bill 96. Dr. Michael Hammond.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to offer comment on the piggyback provision. The leadership of Geogga County School Districts acknowledged the challenges associated with once-in-a-generation or even longer property valuation increases that we're currently experiencing. And we are working, uh, to engage with legislators to achieve meaningful reform around property taxes. We're concerned that implementation of the piggyback provision will not result in reform, but frustrate and confuse taxpayers with program cuts and accelerated new funding requests, as has been pointed out this morning. Setting the record straight, the issues that we are seeing are a direct result of the systemic failure of the Ohio Legislature to fully fund the Fair School Funding Formula, resulting in a shift in responsibility to the residential taxpayers and not the straw man arguments that are being offered in Columbus. Straw man. School districts have a spending problem. ODU Zone Data from '21 through '24 validates a moderate increase in costs, not runaway spending, with teacher costs increasing approximately 2% per year, and healthcare costs averaging approximately 7% increase. Straw man. Ohio schools are flush with cash. 90% of Ohio school districts have a cash carryover balance of less than 75% of annual operating expenditures. Straw man. The General Assembly is appropriately funding public school districts. Ohio ranks 45th in state support of public education. Over the last 20 years, the GA has increased public education funding on average less than 1% per year when adjusted for inflation. Over the last 20 years, the GA has increased public education funding on average less than 1% per year when adjusted for inflation. Systematic state-level policy changes over the last 20 years have shifted the residential taxpayer burden of funding public schools from 47% in 1991 to approximately 70% today. At the time of the Deroff litigation, state support for public education was approximately 45%. Today, we are at 36% and moving precipitously to a 32% figure by 2027. Funding The Fair School Funding Plan Is Tax Reform. The Impact Of The Piggyback. Geogah County School Districts Are High-Achieving, Truly Exceptional Schools Offering A Wide Range Of Curricular And Extracurricular Programs That Meet The Needs Of Our Students With Little State Support. School Leaders Will Share With You Today That Implementation Of The Piggyback, A Provision That Runs Counter To The Will Of The Majority Of Voters In Our Communities To Support The Desired Levels Of Educational Services In Their Schools, Will Result In The Following: Accelerated New Money Levy Requests, New Levies That Will Cost Taxpayers More Than Levies That Qualify For The State Reimbursement Under The Rollback Provision, Cuts In Programs And Services To All Of Our School Districts. The General Assembly Has An Unprecedented Number Of Tax Reform Bills In The Pipeline, With Four Likely Being Voted Out Of Committee Today Alone. We Respectfully Request That You Defer Action On The Piggyback Provision As This Legislation Works Its Way Through The Process And We Are We Are Able To Better Understand The Interactions And Unintended Consequences That May Result. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Ann Brewster.
Thank you, commissioners. I am Deb Ann Brewster, the Treasurer CFO of Chardon Local Schools. I just want to tell a little more about the Chardon story. So Chardon has roughly 2,400 students, 88 square miles, and we're the northmost school district in the county. Most of our money comes from tax revenue, 74.56 from property tax, that's homes, businesses, public utility, 16.41 from the state, and 9.3 from other investments or other revenue ventures, which that's been growing, very proud of that. We're responsible in our spending. Chardon is focused on responsibility with money and planning for long term. We spent funds on one-time projects that make schools safer, better for learning without creating new expenses. We shifted one mill of our inside mill to PI to concentrate on safety and security and and update our schools. So we set aside money last year in the '07-0 and '035 funds for future expenses in our severance and our building projects. And one thing we're really, really proud of, we reduced our fees, our student fees, eliminating activity fees to give students the ability to play or participate. And this saved $1.8 million to our families. We understand it's not, it's indirect, but it's indirect property tax relief to our families. So the piggyback problem. The proposed piggyback would cut $772,000 a year annually from our budget. If the piggyback is true, it would force us to ask for a levy one year sooner. Or maybe even sooner than that if some of this other legislation goes through. A new levy passed in 2027 would not be affected by the the homestead. And the piggyback would increase the burden on local taxpayers. So in my opinion, the piggyback is short-term tax relief with long-term effects on our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to speak. I'm Nancy Benincasa, Superintendent of West Geogah Local Schools. And I'm here, like my colleagues, to share our concerns about the piggyback credit included in House Bill 96 and how it can unintentionally impact our students and families. Here are the key points for West G. The credit would create an annual loss of about $864,000 for West Geogah schools, including $400,000 this fiscal year with no state reimbursement. It would diminish the value of voter-approved levies, commitments our community made to maintaining strong schools, which would, like others have said before, likely require additional levies to make up for that lost revenue. It could introduce unexpected financial instability, making it harder to sustain programming and services that our students are counting on. We all share a desire to support residents and make living in Geogah County affordable. My hope is simply that tax relief not come at the cost of the learning opportunities our children depend on, especially at a time when other statewide proposals may further reduce school funding. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our students, whose needs can sometimes be overlooked in technical policy discussion. A quiet three-person vote today could have very real consequences for thousands and thousands of children across Geogah County. Our students are counting on all of us to protect the resources that help them learn and thrive. With deep respect for your service, I am so appreciative of your work, and I know you have difficult decisions to make. I would ask you on behalf of West Geogah to refrain from adopting the piggyback credit, help us preserve our stability at West Geogah, and for all our county schoolchildren, thank you so much.
Ms. Benincasta, was your letter authorized by your board?
Our board read our letter, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Superintendent from Kinston Local Schools, Bruce Willingham.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today regarding House Bill 96. We appreciate the thoughtful dialogue that's permitted, starting with your letter on October 16th and your commitment to understanding how this proposed property text may affect the communities that you serve. For the Kinston Local Schools, this issue is already pressing. Since 2023, we have taken deliberate steps to strengthen our financial position through responsible budgeting. We have consolidated facilities, balanced class sizes, utilized retirement incentives, and expanded share servicing agreements with neighboring districts. As a result, our cash reserves for the '24-'25 fiscal school year have grown. And during the February 19th, 2025 Geogah County Budget Commission hearing, our Treasurer, Mr. Kales, was commended for the district's accuracy between forecasted and actual spending. The Budget Commission also encouraged us to continue building our cash balance on our October 25 forecast, and it projects a modest surplus of approximately $300,000 for this year. We have taken these expectations very seriously. Our goal has been clear, to delay the need for another operating levy for as long as possible. And in Kinston, that's been over 15 years for our community. However, the piggyback tax exemption outlined in House Bill 96 would jeopardize this progress. For Kinston alone, the estimated annual impact and loss is over $900,000, which is the equivalent of about .75 mil. A reduction of this magnitude would would immediately push our district into deficit spending, erode our cash balance, and accelerate a timeline for next operating levy from roughly five years to two. In a climate where voter fatigue is very real and levy passage rates have declined, this would create a significant and unsustainable challenge for the Kinston schools. Beyond Kinston, the structure of House Bill 96 raises broader concerns. Implementing new tax exemptions at the local level without state reimbursement will likely increase the burden for our remaining taxpayers, reduce revenue for our schools and essential public services, and lead districts to consider actions that none of us want to take, larger staffing reductions, larger class sizes, and programming cuts. Our community has reached a saturation point like many others. Families are already stretched thin, and our ability to pass levies is increasingly fragile. Any policy change that further constrains local revenue without providing replacement, funding makes long-term fiscal stability nearly impossible. We fully support the goal of fair and effective property tax reform, but reform must be paired with a funding model that maintains strong and predictable support for Ohio schools, institutions that anchor our communities and directly influence economic vitality. For these reasons, we respectfully ask you, the Geogah County Commissioners, to carefully consider the far-reaching impact of House Bill 96 on Kinston and the other public agencies across our county, and to refrain from advancing this option without a sustainable plan for replacing this lost revenue. Thank you for your time, your transparency, and your ongoing commitment to the public accountability.
Thank you.
Next, we have Geogah County Library Director, Chris Carroll.
Morning.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. Chris Carroll, Geogah County Public Library Director. I do really appreciate that we got the letter and were notified. I have colleagues in other counties who were surprised when the piggyback exemption was approved and that they already had their budgets ready and were ready to go. We do support families and schools and students in the county, but we also support and provide a lot of services to our seniors and our veterans through our outreach services and our veterans' tech help and just most of our core services. And while we don't separate our patrons based on age, whether you're an adult or an adult at Geogah County Public Library, we see just day to day how many seniors we serve and support. We are already running as lean as we can. We did have a lot of reduced funding from the state in this biennium. So this additional $178,000 in cuts would deeply affect the core services we could provide and would accelerate how soon we would have to go back out to the taxpayers. So I do really appreciate the ability to share this information with you before you make a decision, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
But do you want to state if anyone else is here to speak?
Go ahead, Adam.
Adam Licki with Geogah Public Health. I have Dan Larker, E H Director, Lynn Roman, our board, one of our board members, and then Kate Taylor, she's our finance person. And we wanted to express our concern, obviously, with that piggyback option is, I think, very much that you heard from the schools we work with closely. It seems it's, well, the state did their best, and I agree with Mr. Walder that I think they they did what they could. It pushes that back on localities, who already get everything else pushed back on the localities. And I feel like we're kind of, the the goal is almost like throw the baby out with the bathwater is kind of what it's heading to very quickly. But for us, it's about a $17,000 decrease, which is about half a clerical person. We're on a .2 mil levy, which is almost 20 years old. And everything that we do, every time we get to a point that we look at a levy, do we need a, do we need an increase? We've cut something, or we've taken something that we're not going to use anymore. We've done the first ever in the nation cross-jurisdictional agreement to lower costs and to share management with Mr. Breaky as part of. We've done that over and over again recently. We've done without a sanitarian that we lost, we're not replacing that person. And so we keep lowering our costs as much as we can. I know it's easy to say there's, you know, some boogeyman in the corner, and it's everyone's just, you know, flushed with cash. The Budget Commission does a great job of ensuring that we're doing what we can with what we have and that we don't have giant cash carryovers all over the place. And I think from our standpoint, you know, there's only so much you can do by saying do more with less. And at some point, you just have to do less as well, or you can't do what you're supposed to do. You know, we're not going to be able to get to those food establishments, make sure they're safe when you guys go in and they're being cared for properly. We're not going to care for different water issues. Those are real things that are going to come up, and at some point, you know, that does come, come home to roost, that rooster, so.
How much would you lose?
About $17,000 for the health department. I know it's a little bit smaller than what you've heard, but our point two really does help us out a lot and make sure that we can provide services.
Yeah, I can attest that the health department has a very, very tight budget. And there is, there is no fat to trim on that thing.
We've, we've done it, we've dozed ourselves many a time.
Yeah, we've trimmed as much as we could.
Yeah, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anybody else on the piggyback? We have the Director of Board of Mental Health.
Good morning, thank you. Christine Locomiac, Executive Director of Geogah Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services. Definitely appreciate the opportunity to be here and to address the board. We actually had a special board meeting on October 29th so that our Board of Directors could deliberate the facts and to decide how this would affect us and how to move forward. And so I had been directed by my board, and again, the Board of Directors served without compensation. So they're all volunteers, Geogah County residents. And they unanimously decided that I should write a letter stating that none of the board members support implementing these tax credits locally. A lot of what has already been said will affect our Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services. I think just two points that haven't been mentioned, our decrease would be 106,000 annually in levy collections. And there's no offsetting benefit from the rising property values for our department because our levies continue to collect a rate established at the 2008.5 and 2009.7 levies. We also have, you know, the the decline would be, it was unexpected if it goes through. And so we're already, you know, in contracts with our providers and providing services that would be affected. So I appreciate the opportunity to address you so that you can make a good decision. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anybody else on the piggyback provision? State your name and address.
Skip Lakeville 12448, Ben Pridg, Chastel, Ohio 44026. There's an old saying that I learned when I entered the service, and that is, avoid even the appearance impropriety. And so there were some comments made about how the letter went out, and I want to address that a little bit because it's important. This board operates as a board. There is no individual commissioner on this decision, or on this board that makes a decision. All decisions are made by the board. If that letter when, should have gone out, and I think it should have. I think, Carolyn, your sense was correct, that there should be data collection. And and I think your senses are right about, your feelings about the House Bill 96, you and I agree on that. But what we don't agree on is your approach. You're operating as though you're a county executive. You are not a county executive. I watched today as you were rude to Ralph and didn't allow him to complete his sentence. That's inappropriate. If that letter went out and went out through this office, I have real concerns about it because it creates an appearance. We have a county administrator who I'm sure was familiar with the fact that this letter was going out. That county administrator failed because she should know that her job is to ensure every county commissioner has equal opportunity to have all the information necessary to make good decisions as the board makes a decision. And shame on the auditor for participating in this appearance on this letter that went out. The auditor should have said, come back to the board, have a discussion, craft a letter that's from the board, and then send that out to the community. So that all creates the impression that we have one person who is controlling things on this board. It's a very bad look. And I suggest that this board look at that and and change behavior a bit. Thank you.
So Skip, I have to, I have to say, I I'm going to defend our county administrator because she did not know about the letter. So do, you know, don't say that she failed because she did not know about the letter either.
If that's true, and you didn't know about the, did you know about the letter, Amy? If you did not, then I apologize to you because you should have known about it. There should be nothing coming out of the commissioner's office that the county administrator does not know about, that the other two commissioners don't know about. There should be no communications. This is a board. Having sat on that board, I know how important it is that the board operate as a team and that that every decision be from the board. And so I apologize to you, Amy, because I was misreading this situation. So thank you, thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Again, no decision was made. There was no, I mean, there was no unilateral decision, just a letter went out for fact finding.
Anybody else on the piggyback?
City of Chardon? Did you want to speak? You don't have to, just.
Ben, I'm city manager, city of Chardon. Admittedly, we're unique, right? We're the cities, we're the county's only city, and we're much less dependent on property taxes than most of my colleagues who spoke here today. And so I think, you know, we spoke about it on the floor, and the letter that I sent back intimates that, you know, the city will absorb our loss because admittedly, our loss is very minor. Our larger concern is for our fire department. Our fire department is our only service entirely dependent on property taxes, and it is a partnership with two of our neighboring townships who are themselves also dependent on property taxes. And so, you know, our bigger concern is what impact would that have on our neighbors to help provide that shared service? And not necessarily for direct city services, so to speak.
Thank you.
Don, did you want to say anything?
I can't.
It's up to you. Just saw you back there.
Geogah County Board of Developmental Disability, Don Rice, Superintendent. The cut for us would mean about $317,000 a year. For us, that's serving a lot of people. For us, we're already trying to stretch, as we've been looking at our levies, we knew we'd need to be on. In 2026, we're trying to pull back so that we can go in 2027 instead. That means us already cutting about $1.5 million in expenses, readjusting what we're doing. To make it one point eight just makes it that much harder and would mean that potentially we'd have to go on earlier. But we'd like not to. We understand that people right now don't like taxes. We don't like taxes. Nobody likes taxes, but it's how you pay for the services that are necessary. And you have to balance that. What services would be cut? Well, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, that's about a fourth of what we put into our early intervention program. Staffing wise, speech therapist or OTs or those type of things. I don't know what cuts would have to happen or who wouldn't be able to be served. But we hope not to have to make that call. We're trying to stretch it as we can. I, I just wouldn't recommend that this is any time to do this. There are things to, that need to be looked at otherwise. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Anybody else?
Oh, Karen from Montpel.
Karen Hawkins, the Squad Officer of Montpel Township. I'm not quite as elegant as everyone else has and I haven't prepared anything to say. But one of the things that has been happening to townships as we do go forth with new levies that would be put on, we are, are having our levies, as they call it, disqualified or unqualified, which takes away our homestead and roll back, as we call it, dollars from the states at that time as well when we do put on new additional levies. Other people were talking about the amount of dollars that comes out. Yes, we're only going to be miss, we would be missing about sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Isn't a lot of money. But if I quickly looked at that, that would be, we, real quick, get rid of the fire chief and get rid of my one and only part-time road department to make up that money in the quickest way possible. I still have to keep the lights on. And as always, as any business owner knows, the easiest cut is in your staffing.
Thank you.
Camden Township, did you guys want to say anything? No, okay.
Okay, well, that's, that's all for comment for the piggyback. Would the, would the board like to take any action today?
No, I mean, I'm not in favor of, of implementing this, so I, I'm a motion for my stance.
I'm not in favor of it personally, so we'll just, no action. Hopefully, no action will ever be taken on House Bill ninety-six, piggyback credit.
And to be honest with you, Jim, if you, if you, if you feel that way, I would make a motion to say no to it.
I second that motion.
So what specifically is the motion?
Is to not get involved with the piggyback credit.
Okay.
Do the opposite of what, two or three other counties in the state of Ohio? So any more discussion?
How about, could the motion be that the commissioners will not implement the piggyback provisions for either the owner occupied credit or the homestead exemption from House Bill ninety-six?
We're all saying the same thing, so.
Okay, I just, I want, I would like the record to be clear what, what we're agreeing to. Yes.
Nope, I'll get it back.
All right, we're, we're live on YouTube.
So the discussion is over with. Call for a vote.
I had a motion by Commissioner Stilary.
A second by Commissioner DeBorak. Commissioner Breaky clarified what the motion would be, so Commissioner Stilary?
Yes.
Commissioner Breaky?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBorak?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I would, Commissioner, on those heels. So really what I'd like to do is just briefly talk with you about your intent for the ribbon cutting for this very large and lengthy project. We do have a tentative date, which I won't mention today, so I don't cause any confusion. But we do have a tentative date established for the end of January. So just wanted to get some feedback from you on, on the look, the feel, you know, maybe some parties that need to be involved. I mean, obviously, there's, there's, you know, occupants within the courthouse. So just kind of getting some guidance from you at this point, so I can start to shape what that looks like in the weeks and months, in and around the holidays.
Yeah, I mean, we should, we should invite probably the elected officials in the county, the city of Charden, our federal and state legislators. I know there was some discussion of doing a walkthrough for the community following the ribbon cutting. That's something I'm certainly interested in. I think the, the taxpayers should get to see what they spent all this money on. Obviously, not going into the secure areas, which are kind of the whole point of the expansion, but.
Yes, and I did put an early feeler out to NV5 about that specifically, like how we can make something like that happen where, you know, not in the secure spaces, but allowing a walkthrough for the public. So they are exploring that and then I speak with them every Thursday. So likely in a few days, we'll have some, some updates on that, what's, what's possible. Any other feedback for me? And I know it's iterative, so if, if there's things you think of outside of this, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, also just kind of publicly that we are looking at that as we pass a substantial completion.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you on that topic.
Board appointment?
I just wanted to bring this back up to before all of you. And I resent the applications and the recommendation that was received by, from the Board of DD. This appointment needs to be made, I know later than next Tuesday to meet the requirements of the O R C. So I'm just kind of re, bringing that back up to see where you stand on whether you need additional time or if you want to set up appointments or anything like that, or if you have done your.
I, I mean, I read the recommend, or the, the resumes provided, the cover letters and the applications and I'm comfortable making a decision.
So then, if you send me your individually what you, what you're looking for, then I will put it on the agenda for next Tuesday for a formal vote.
Okay, good.
What, what do you mean what we're looking for?
Like your individual recommendation and then we'll put it on to.
I feel comfortable about that. Can we, can we just have an appointment and we have the discussion in session?
I need you to tell me who you want for that appointment. That's what I'm looking for.
Rebecca Bennett would be my choice for the.
Yes, her resume seemed to be top notch.
I mean, they were, honestly, they were all great. I, I think it's nice to see so many people that are willing to step up and especially like there were some younger applicants, which I like. And I, I'm honestly, and I think any of them would be good.
Want to make a motion?
Ralph? I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Do, did you want to do it today or did you want to wait till? We can just wait till Tuesday.
I just want to make sure that I have the time period correct for the motion so that we're clear.
Why don't we just put that on the agenda for now?
Let's, let's just do that.
With Miss Bennett.
You got a lot going on here.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's correct and has all the information that's necessary.
Next is Cleveland Electric Illuminating Company at the Geogga County Airport. I've talked to our county prosecutor several times, talked to some other people about first energy and that and a recommendation from the prosecutor is he's seen this concept before in other areas, other counties and just sign it and for the easement for the electricity. That's my motion.
Yes, our goal is to have it on session for next week.
Oh.
So I just wanted to see if there's any other concerns that you had before we bring it into session.
I don't have any concerns. As if he did make a motion and I second that, can we just move this forward so that the airport could get, get this, put, put to rest?
The only issue that I have right now is that the signed version of the easement coming from the prosecutor's office did not make it yesterday and in our inner office mail. And it probably is here somewhere, I'm not sure. So I just would prefer that the document.
Second will work within your timeline, but that, that'll be okay? All right.
Next week it is.
Put down into the mailroom, but it missed our run yesterday afternoon, so.
Okay, that's seventeen. Eighteen is more public comment. Does anybody have anything else?
This is the sixty-second year that John F. Kennedy Fitzgerald was murdered in Dallas, Texas. Let's hope this never, ever happens again. What I saw here today was confusion and this causes major problems. Let's get the acts together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, now we will go to item nineteen. Commissioners offices requesting the board move an executive session for the purposes of discussing compensation of a public employee pursuant to R I Vice Code one-twenty-one point two-two G one.
Commissioner Stilary?
Bishop Breaky?
Aye.
Bishop Warren?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be Mark and myself.